This conference will now be recorded.
President of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will call the meeting to order in consideration of this evening's agenda. If there are no changes, we'll move on to item number one, which is requests or comments from the public. If you have any requests or comments this evening, please remember to state your name and address at the beginning of your comment. You'll have three minutes and then toward the end, I'll give you a little signal to wrap it up.
Mayor, the only comment I would have is on the agenda as published, number 10 is being canceled. The correspondence went out earlier today on that topic and so the executive session was not necessary.
Good evening. My name is Dave Johnson, Bureau of Labor, Department of Secretaries. And so, uh, nobody really seems to know what's going on with that property up there where the hard rock was going to be. So I just wanted to kind of throw out there to the council that a lot of people seem to think that a Costco would be awesome there. And I don't know if anybody's thought about it or anybody suggested it, but that's the kind of cash register we need to generate profit tax right there. And there's something else that nobody else has in the area like KCK, Sam's Club, all that stuff. So it would be perfect location. And so, just want to throw that one out there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
There are no other comments. We'll move on to item number two, which is consent approval of the consent agenda items. If you, if anybody would like either A or B removed for specific questions, we can consider that and ask those now, otherwise I'll hear a motion to approve for item number two.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve item two A and B as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Malat and a second from Councilman Schreiber. Will the clerk please call?
Schreiber.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Akka.
Yes.
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 Item number three, consider selection of Gordon CPA as the city's auditor for the year ending in December 31st, 2023.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council, what do you have before you is the background information for the 2023 audit and the auditor selection, which is staff would recommend the Gordon CPA as Shawn Gordon. We've worked with him since, at his company since 2019. The original contract was three years and then the next two years are one-year extension. This would be the last one-year extension and then we would go out for qualifications and bids for the 2024 audit. So, in a sense, we're keeping with the same, because the timing is pretty tough to go out for bids and do all that. We've been more than satisfied with their response and the methodology that they've used. We've been happy with their audits. There is a financial impact. It is about 11-plus percent and a change, but that, that is consistent with these two years extensions they were a little more. Partly it is that a little more staffing will go into it with its partner and that sort of thing. So there's an added cost of just doing business and that, so that moved from $11,150 to $12,460. But in the end, staff would recommend would be consistent with, with this particular audit, allow 2024 for requests for proposals. Therefore, our recommendation is we stay with Gordon CPA for the amount of $12,460 and that's a not-to-exceed amount.
Make a motion to consider selecting Gordon CPA as the city's auditor for the year ending December 31st, 2023.
Second. We have a motion from Councilman Schreiber, a second from Councilman Akka. Will the clerk please?
I have one question.
Oh, sorry, I had a question.
Is that going to be okay with the budget that we approved two weeks ago?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
It's not going to be impact that down. I was.
Motion from Councilman Schreiber, a second from Councilman Akka. Will the clerk please call?
Schreiber.
Yes.
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 Number four is consider resolution 2023-10 regarding the gap waiver for 2023 audit.
Mayor, thank you. Mayor, council, what you have before you is the resolution 2023-10 and this is the gap waiver. This is something we do annually. We are waiving ourselves out of the general accepted accounting principles. It's because we're on a cash basis and it essentially is cash exchanges is what we're auditing. So whether we take in money or distribute money in some way, payment of bills, that sort of thing. So this is a standard practice. We've been doing this for years. This is common for other municipalities as well. So we do confirm that you accept resolution 2023-10 and adopt it as such.
Is this new then, Mark?
This gap waiver?
Yeah.
No, no, no. We do it, like I said.
Every year?
Every year.
Okay.
You've done it for several.
Okay.
Again, it's a common practice, statutory lawfully, lawful in the statutes and we, this accounting standard, we're on a cash basis. So very simply, we're just auditing our cash exchanges.
Okay.
That's what it is.
Make a motion to re-adopt resolution number 2023-10.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Bishop and a second from Councilman Scott. Will the clerk please call?
Schreiber.
I'm sorry, did you have a question?
It was reversed, sorry.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
For the note, sorry.
Bishop was the motion.
Yes. Oh, sorry. Okay. It's me. Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm sorry, everybody.
Good to check. Will the clerk please call?
Schreiber.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Akka. Yes.
Bishop.
Yes.
Malat. Yes.
Item number five on the agenda is consider resolution 2023-11 fixing the time and place for a hearing to determine if the structure at 10600 Caw Drive is dangerous of safe or unfit for human habitation.
Mayor, I'm going to have Captain Jeff Short make the presentation on this.
Madam Mayor and Council, before you, you have resolution 2023-11. We're just going to set a date for a public hearing regarding a dangerous and unfit structure at 10600 Caw Drive. The property itself has overgrown vegetation, a fallen tree on it, and numerous other code violations. City staff has conducted inspection of the structure and have deemed that there's multiple areas that are unfit and unsafe and it's deemed as a fire hazard to the community. After adopting a resolution to set the hearing, it would need to be published in the Yine Echo to move forward in giving the property owners notice and attempt to come to the hearing. And that date for the hearing, it looks like it would be set for the 20th, excuse me, the 13th of November here at City Hall.
Has there been any conversation with the owners?
Yes. Actually, so we move forward with our process because of the plight of the property. We have a process in place. We didn't want to put our timeframe on them. We wanted to put them on ours. They have been in good communication with our community service officer, Tom Haas, and they are actually in the works of obtaining the proper permits to move forward with the demolition of it. So I don't know actually that this will come to that because we're in good communication with them. I think that they're going to make the efforts to do it on their, on their own accord is what it sounds like so far. But we're going to move forward with our process and we're not waiting on that.
Thank you.
I want to ask a question. It might be ridiculous, but I'm kind of ridiculous anyway. But they mined a lot out of that. They, they took a lot of excavation out of that and I remember a few years back, we had asked for mining fees for tonnage of money or tonnage of materials that were hauled out and that we were supposed to get as a city. Is there any records of us receiving any funds from that?
106.
Has it changed ownership since then? And?
So the asks are, do we have, if there was mining fees set, have we received any?
Yes.
And I think that would be regardless of whoever the owner is, whether it's an owner or.
That happened about, probably about the same time that this mining fee thing, you remember that? Mining fees came up? Because I kind of laughed up here about who's going to figure out how much earth they're taking out of there, who's going to weigh it, you know, and how are we going to know that? But if it's there that we were supposed to receive it, I think we need to follow up on that and see if we can receive some of that money.
Certainly, if we're charging any, be some sort of formal agreement, just need to take the time and, and I can get a report back to you as soon as I can.
I'd like.
We just need to do the research on it.
I'd like to see that because we're so worried about money right now. I think anything that we're deserved, I think we deserve. So if I could ask for some kind of a report back on that.
That's, that's Mac and Annie still, isn't it?
I don't know if they own it or not, but I would.
Yeah.
That would be the question, who particularly owns it?
Yeah.
We'll do the research and I'll have the answers for you.
But that's true. It definitely needs to be cleaned up.
And what we're doing here, again, we're just setting the hearing and they could come with the right paperwork and, and at that hearing and they're already working with us, no different than the other folks we talked about last time. So we're just setting the hearing where, as, as it was stated, we're working on our time because we do sometimes have people who retract their kind of formal handshake agreements and things like that. So stay on our time. We're not behind, you know, when, when we're starting the process.
Well, there might have been a resolution or ordinance or something to the effect of. Uncertain if they got a piece of money to take out of there. Just a thought.
I'll make the motion to adopt resolution number 2023-11, setting the public hearing for November 13th, 2023, on or after 6:00 PM.
Second.
Does anyone else have a question? We have a motion from Councilman Bishop and a second from Councilman Schreiber. Will the clerk please call?
Schreiber.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Yes.
Bishop.
Yes.
Yes.
Item number six, consider request for a change order in the amount of $14,099.87 to add guardrails to the 102nd Street Culvert Replacement Project.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll call on Director Goodall to present the information.
Mayor and council, you have before you change order number one for the 102nd Street Culvert Replacement. This change order comes from just a safety concern. The original design of that was going to be a wider shoulder on the east side and that was previous administration. It talked with our engineer about that to stay away from a guardrail. But upon visiting the site, there's about a 20 to 30-foot drop-off on that east side. I think a guardrail is definitely needed there. We actually have a culvert box on the west side also that would benefit from some protection from a guardrail. So we've come back with a change order for a guardrail installation. It still will come from the same fund, drop that balance down to 303,675.63, but the total for the guardrail is $14,099.87. We would recommend approval.
Is that a guardrail on both sides?
Yes.
And what type of guardrail is it?
It'd just be a standard guardrail, metal guardrail. Yeah.
Madam Mayor, council, if there's no other questions, make a motion to approve the installation of the guardrails by Lexi Underground Construction LLC in the amount of $14,099.87.
I did have one quick question on that guardrail. I know you said it was a previous administration that kind of kept that off of the.
Design.
Design.
Yeah.
Did the other bids that we received from the different contractors include guardrails in their bids?
No, they were all bid specifically off of the design engineer and it all had that wider shoulder and that was it.
So the background there is that's a four-to-one slope and not a wide shoulder. So based on that slope design, it is, they, you're not required to install guardrails if you design it and build it to that standard. So therefore, the four-to-one slope, build that out. You don't have to add $14,000 with the guardrails, that sort of thing. However, it wasn't built to that four-to-one slope. That was going to be a difficult construction maneuver. I don't know if it's just legacy or would have been that difficult based on the terrain and just the angles of things and how it's all come together. So there was somewhat of a field change where then we installed, if you haven't been there, we installed about four, five, six-foot wide shoulder, but there's still a pretty good drop-off where that discharge tube is. And so we thought in the field that this was the best way to handle it. And if you just simply look at it, common sense would tell you this is easy money spent in the sense of it's safety.
Safety.
You have on the west side, you have a concrete block that wasn't there before. You run off that road on slip time or something, you're going to hit something pretty hard, non-movable, you know? So we just think it's a good safety measure. So again, that design by, by standard eliminates the need technically for the guardrails.
Yeah.
Thank you. If there are no other questions. We have a motion from Councilman Scott and a second from Councilman Malat. Will the clerk please call?
Schreiber.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Akka. Bishop.
Yes.
Malat.
Yes.
Okay. Item seven, consider request for a change order in the amount of $15,810.56 for additional reasonable and necessary construction-related work completed by the contractor beyond the original scope of work on 102nd Street Culvert Replacement Project.
Mayor, I'll again call on Director Goodall to present this one as well.
Mayor, council, you have a change order number two on 102nd Street Culvert Replacement. This change order comes mostly from a water line conflict that we had. We came to site, we had it marked, was not located where everyone thought it was. There was a 45-degree angle on where the water line that we thought was supposed to be. Well, in engineering, 45 degrees would mean to the side or down. And everybody thought it went to the side. It didn't, it went down under and it was actually in conflict with our elevation of what we needed for the tube, so they had to relocate that line. Legacy tried to assist BPU in moving along with it. They actually dug around the line, tried to get the prep for them because they were going to be a couple days to get there, trying to keep them from being delayed too long. BPU finally showed up, they did relocate the line, but it really went twice. Or Legacy showed up and the line was leaking, but they had called it back and waited in. So they had some anticipers, some added expenses for labor, just showing up and not getting the job the longer time they had their equipment, more materials. They actually ended up over dig the road for the size of the water line, how far it had been, so we had more prepare on the road. They did come back with a much larger initial change order that we negotiated down more than 50%. So I mean, I feel like these are actually expenses that were incurred. We also did talk with BPU as far as what their policies are. BPU's policy is that if it is a road reconstruction, they are responsible for relocating their line in the right of way. If it is a sewer line or a stormwater line project, they are, they do not absorb those costs. So I don't know if that's a discussion down the road, but that's where we are with this one. So we do feel like these are expenses that were incurred and should be paid to Legacy.
Before, I'm sorry, I just have a comment, maybe a question. Would you be so kind as to check our agreement contract with BPU to see how that is written? Thank you for, thank you for.
I actually had a meeting with BPU for future projects after this had occurred. They just sent it to us from there. I don't have any writing with them that we asked for.
Yeah, I think their correspondence was kind of give us the gist of what their policy is, how they, how they particularly operate on these construction projects and I think CE has addressed it, which is depending on which kind of project it is, is what they're going to be responsible for.
Right. Thank you for negotiating that down too, but you know, if you could see what the contract is.
CE, um, did you say that, that they, when you were talking about the water sewer and stormwater, did you say that when they're relocating the water line, that they're responsible for it?
They are not responsible for it if it's a stormwater project or a sewer line.
Oh, a stormwater project?
Yes.
I got you. Okay. All right.
I did have a question about, there was a difference in the length of the project from where it started or where it was bid to where it ended up. Who changed the design length of the project though? And what has that changed mean?
Okay. I do think CE described what, what happened. It starts with the BPU line and what our type of project is, which is the stormwater, and what, what happened based on digging out the line, moving the line, making the adjustments and all that. It added some length to the road, resurfacing or replacement, as well as the thickness of the concrete. So there was two costs in there. The longer it is, of course, it's going to cost more and the thickness that they had to put in to put the crown of that road in. If you've been there, it's pretty distinct, the way they had to do it to get that, to ensure that the flow went east and west. And CE, you might have some additional on that as well or no?
The only other thing was that Legacy did bid that lining in rock, which needed to happen, but that was an additional against the requirement.
Could you tell me the original bid and then what we're actually going to end up at for this project?
Yeah. CE, you know the exact, it was 84,000 or 81,000 plus.
81,259.
81,259.
50.
And then by the time we paid the two change orders, if you will, adding the guardrails, which, believe me, I, I, I think they should have been bid in there originally, but here and there. And then paying this particular change order, which is work they really did and needed to be done, we're down, the balance of that particular fund will be 287,865.07.
So what would the 81, I'm sorry, what was the 81,000 change to?
31,000 change order.
Yeah, between the two.
I guess I'm confused because before the culvert project started, locates were done, including water lines for BPU, correct? I mean, wouldn't there, when the original?
But located incorrectly. And that's what created the problem. Legacy was completely.
USIC.
And was going to be out of the way. And they dug for about a day and a half and then they finally called in and couldn't find this water line. So we had BPU show up on site and then they were like, oh, it goes right there. Well, then they had an engineer in the office looking at their plan and was like, guys, I think that may go down instead of the east.
So did BPU do the original locates or was it by another locate company? Because.
Which does bring that into question, you know? I think they just looked at some plans and marked, they didn't go out there and locate somewhere.
Well, that somehow makes us responsible for their inaccuracy on their locate. That's, I mean, they bid the project, you know, after seeing the locates, but I don't know. I have a little bit of a hard time with this one.
I agree with Councilman Scott. I wonder if we should be talking to that third party to see if they would like to assist in some of the overage fees since it was a lot due to their lack of diligence?
Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts. I think some investigation is going to be necessary as to where said blame lies and whether or not there is not some language and some agreement somewhere that they are not held responsible for some of these things. So we're going to have to do some digging for sure.
Usually on, if BPU didn't do the locates, you know, if that, if that is a UCC, I can't remember.
USIC. USIC.
There you go. So if that locate company does it, they have a, do not exceed, you know, plus or minus three or four or five feet, and it sounds like two feet on this one, well, it sounds like they were, they missed it completely.
Thing is, is the project was bid, there were no locates. When even better, called in the locate. Yeah. I mean, so they didn't.
That's a challenge.
They didn't locate prior to.
Okay.
But I mean, I don't know, we can say anything there. They did mislocate. Typically, the only way you go back on them is if they mislocated, they're outside your locate, if you get a line.
So. So you said locates were done after the bid was?
And that's typical. Yeah, we did have the project by the design and then the contractor will call in and locate so you can see everything at that point.
Then.
So the locator was hired by the contractors, not by the city?
They called it in. I mean, they're not really hired.
Yes.
It's just a third party that everybody uses. I mean, it's just.
It's a free service.
Yeah, it's free.
It's, it's a free service and actually it's the law.
Yeah.
But I have, I've ran into this before. We were digging footings or something like that and we come across a pipe, we didn't, this particular one, we didn't hit, but it scraped it and it was within their two feet. And USIC ended up paying for us to relocate that line because it was in their two feet. So I think looking, you know, getting with them, you know, that, if they mislocated, it's their fault, you know?
But I think.
If you don't hit it.
I think, and I agree with you too, but I think the point is what he's trying to say is that the bid was given and the locates were done and then, and then those locates were wrong, you know, which they had to make that change. So I was, I was kind of hoping that they didn't locate first, but that doesn't sound like case.
No, you'd never do that.
Yeah. I think the order does matter.
Yeah, it does.
This contractor did do that work.
He did.
Doug and Doug apparently to, to no, to no end. And then finally they discovered that, I think Goodall, Mr. Goodall said it, that it went down and then, but there was some indication from the paperwork that it did cross the street and that was, that's not accurate. And then, then what engages here is they're trying to find it. The next piece is now all the movement parts, right? They had to get BPU, they helped dig that, they helped replace all of it in some way because BPU doesn't do some of that work, so the contractor's responsible, put it in rock, do all these things, and that did add some costs. And again, they felt their cost was extremely higher. Now, if there's no confidence in, in this particular number, we can do the investigate. We don't have to prove this now. It took us a long time, over, over several weeks here to negotiate because we were not comfortable in some of the other added costs, machinery sitting around charge, you know, send, send our labor home kind of thing because BPU didn't connect the line right or these kinds of things. So there are some other things that are impacting it, but in a sense, we, we narrowed this down to what work they actually did and they expended this particular money. Now, we can go back and investigate who might be somewhat responsible for that in a sense, but I think the order does matter. They bid this job without the locates, they called in the locate service and somewhere they got it wrong.
I do think that the mislocate does not impact that this was going to happen. Usually on a mislocated because they mislocated it in the line. That's when they pay out. They mislocated it, but that line was still going to be where it was. It would have to be. I don't know that you're going to get them to say that their, their fault caused this because that is already the conflict regardless of they mislocated it or not. If they had mislocated it and they would have dug into the water line.
That's different.
Then that's different.
It sounds like, it sounds like they did the work above and beyond, the extra concrete, the extra length, and then you did your due diligence trying to get the price down.
We took out every hour. They, they tried to submit a lot of idle labor and we just told them we weren't going to pay that.
Yeah.
Give us your exact cost. I feel very comfortable that these are what they expended out there.
Yeah.
And I just don't know that what, I mean, we can definitely check with USIC if we want, but I just don't think that's going to.
I don't think, I don't really don't think so either.
Well, it doesn't hurt.
Exactly. I'm, I'm not saying we can't. We definitely can check with them, but I just don't know that it will. I just think the water line was in conflict regardless of.
Would you guys want to move forward with this or do you want to table it and get more information?
What, is there a legal opinion on recourse action or? I mean, we need to pay the people, but is it going to hurt us if we don't pay them now? Is it okay for them to wait to get their money or? I mean, it sounds like CE's done his due diligence on that. You've negotiated it down quite a bit, but.
It started at 34,000.
And you've cut it basically to way in half.
Yeah, we got a little stop 55%.
Maybe we need to pay this and then, and then get to a little bit more diligent, eligible service on our.
There, there is some language, I'm sorry, for the, for the change order part of this, that the city can consider some of these reasonable requests for, for change, for some unknown challenge to, to the project that, that cost them some money to do it within the standards, right? So that language does exist, we looked at that. We didn't think, as you, as you see, we have a fifteen thousand dollar request here, but their request was twice that. In the sense, so we didn't think those were reasonable charges.
Mm-hmm.
And, and so we've gotten down to, okay, we can, we believe this is good intent here, that you've gone out, you've done the work, you've done it to this standard, and we're not paying for idle time and labor that, you know, they didn't move from that project, they overhead and all this other stuff. So we, we just washed that out. But there is some legal verbiage that we operated under that gives us the discretion, if you will.
Yeah.
To, to look at this and make a decision, and that's why it's before you now. We, you've heard Director Goodall, we've talked with these folks extensively about, you know, what it was. We didn't feel the first request was even reasonable, so we think we've gotten it down to this part here. Now, do we owe these folks this money? That would be the legal question, right? Do we, but did they do it in good faith, good effort? We, I think the answer that CE and I would give you is yes, and they've been reasonable to work with. But maybe we do have some protections legally, if you want to consider that, and we could, we could still table this and come back. We've been in several days of negotiation to get it here. So what's, what's, what's another couple of weeks? There's no emergency here. The project is ninety-two percent without the guardrails done, right? So we're, we're, we're still engaged with them, so we can, we can do that, have the legal paperwork looked at and, and go from there. Or we can really hone down, if you'd like more of a, a detailed what we said yes to, there's an option as well. So you, you do have that option to table this matter, and we can bring it to you at any time.
Do we have other work with the Legesand ground scheduled coming up?
No, sir, we don't. This was the project that we, they, we awarded the bid on.
Yeah.
There are drainage related projects that they're interested in with the city. It seemed to be, they, their work was.
Pretty good.
Pretty good. You know, they were good to work with people. That doesn't mean we give them, give them bids.
Yeah.
They'll have to be competitive, but I think they're very interested in working for us again, so.
Well, they can, oh, God.
Good. Their initial bid was forty thousand dollars plus hundred.
That's, that's what I was wondering too.
Yeah.
So I mean, they were very ready to do it, and if this water line conflict hadn't come up, they were going to be right on.
Yeah.
I mean, so if this water line, progress water line conflict is the only thing that's really elevated their cost.
Yeah.
And then the guardrails were just an extra that we needed.
That was a picture that I think new administration.
What do you think? Pay it?
Mayor, I want to make a motion that we pay them change order number two, that we remit payment fifteen thousand, eight hundred and ten fifty-six to Legacy.
Would you consider making a part of that motion, because that would be subject to final legal review of the release documents and change.
Sure.
Can we send my motion to table the item until the October eighth meeting and bring back legal?
Well, no, I think that you can make the motion to pay, but it would be.
Well, yeah, but if you can negotiate it down ten thousand dollars more, that might even be a better way to do it. Motion to table till October eighth and get some more verbiage from the city attorney and city manager.
Second. Did you check the date?
I think it's October.
It's a Sunday. Do you want to send it tonight?
Nine.
October ninth.
Ninth. Any other questions? All right, we have a motion from Councilman Mott, a second from Councilman Adcox, will the clerk please call?
Trevor.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes.
Bishop.
Yes.
Mott.
Yes.
Item number eight, consider authorizing payment of nineteen thousand, nine hundred and one dollars and seven cents to Union Bank and Trust to cover outstanding twenty-twenty-three vehicle purposes costs.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Council, what you have before you is the background describing kind of what the, what the issue is, was. In a sense, we, we lease payment vehicles, we pay them manually. We've had delays after delays of vehicles on order and that sort of thing. So what happened here, from all indications, is that a bill of about thirteen thousand plus was paid to an escrow account that was actually slated for these most current vehicles to be paid from, okay? So, and those current vehicles, they have about a twenty-two hundred added cost than the eighteen months prior. So that the cost has risen, inflation, that sort of thing. And so the cost of purchasing and outfitting for each one of those is about twenty-two hundred bucks a piece. So we're about sixty-six hundred bucks plus another thirteen hundred plus, that is the nineteen thousand dollars. Let me give you the exact, nineteen thousand, nine hundred and one and seven cents. That's outstanding that we need to pay to the escrow so that the, the latest vendor can be completely made whole and paid out. So that, that's essentially what's happened here, is there's been overpayments to an escrow in which payments shouldn't have gone there. They, they were for previous vehicles, and they should have gone to another account, and they didn't. So we're correcting somewhat of an error and getting it paid.
We didn't lose that money that we paid in error, went to the escrow, right?
Went to the escrow, and what happens is that escrow takes that in and they pay the checks out to, to the vendor.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And which vehicles are these?
The particular ones we're paying is the ones we financed for one hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and eleven. And that, in the end, will be, they've changed from Ford to Dodge SUVs.
Okay.
And before long, we'll be financing, self-financing some of those, do you know when that will start?
Well, I wouldn't, yes, in the future, we, I think, you know, you're talking about that capital reserve fund that we created. And so essentially, it's, that is not funded yet. We anticipate selling any vehicles, that sort of stuff, and then parking that money to cede that particular in. And then we need to start thinking about how we're going to then replenish that fund as an annual transfer or that, hey, we're, we're going to put a hundred thousand dollars in there on, on a regular basis to get ready for these expenses. Because we won't be ready for them probably in the next twenty-four months until we do make some budgetary decisions.
Got to pay the bills, make the motion to authorize payment of nineteen thousand, nine hundred and one oh seventy, Union Bank and Trust to satisfy an outstanding balance related to vehicle purposes.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Mott and a second from Councilman Bishop, will the clerk please call?
Trevor.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes.
Bishop.
Yes.
Mott.
Yes.
Item number nine, consider amending resolution twenty-twenty-three dash oh nine to extend the publishing dates and hearing date due to mispublication by the publisher.
Uh, Mayor, thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, I apologize for the confusion, I had several asks about, this looked like the same one from earlier today. But this is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago to set a public hearing. Now, in, under these particular situations, these unfit or dangerous structures, when we set the hearing date, we have to publish it consecutively, one week and then the next week. So those instructions were sent to the publisher, however, in error, they didn't publish a second time. Therefore, we have to revisit it, and staff is recommending the amendment of section one and section two, as you can read there, of, of the resolution already passed twenty-twenty-three zero nine. It sets the hearing date and those other dates as well, and they do align with the one we just did tonight, they're the same dates.
Is there going to be an extra fee in this?
For who?
For us.
For us, I don't know. I don't think they're going to charge us again.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve resolution number two zero two three oh nine for the date to be.
We're amending the dates.
Amending the dates to. Yeah, section one and section two. There we go.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Bishop and a second from Councilman Mott. Will the clerk please call?
Trevor.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes.
Bishop.
Yes.
Mott.
Yes.
Item number ten, the agenda is no longer needed, so we will move on to item number eleven, the city manager report.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Council, I do have some housekeeping for you. We do have candidate interviews, and you will be assembling, and in a sense, it's a special meeting. Therefore, I have with me, it takes, the special meeting, or the call to the special meeting takes three council members' requests to the mayor to set that meeting. That meeting will be set for tomorrow. You will essentially, should you sign these, three of you sign these documents, we'll have a special meeting. You'll assemble in here, call the meeting to order, and as a regular session, and you'll immediately recess into executive session. Now, that, that will go, that will repeat itself on a regular basis. In other words, for every candidate that you have, you have, you have the duration, you have the persons who are going to be invited to that meeting, and, and you'll, you'll return to that six seventy, the training room, I'm sorry, recess to it. Then you'll come back out and go back into open session. On the recess and on the return, the city clerk will need to be present, but not in the room with you at the executive session. And again, each candidate's name will have to be, that's the person that needs to be invited, and anybody else you want to invite. But it's essentially the same way we do any other executive sessions. So if you keep that process in mind, and Shantel will be here to help kind of guide you along. But we have to have a formal record of that, and again, the duration and all the things that you do before. So I have, I have three documents, and Mayor, do you want me to hand those out to any volunteers, or would you like to do it, or?
Yeah, either way, if you want.
Okay, this, this three folks, council people want to be the quester of the special session. One? Two? And the city clerk will attest those, once they're signed and after the meeting ends. In a sense, we'll start it right at twelve-thirty, do I understand the?
I believe those might have been adjusted.
I think it's one forty-five, I think it was adjusted, wasn't it?
Okay, I don't, I don't know that, so we should probably say that right now.
Let me.
Yeah.
Can you confirm?
Because I think there was some candidate.
I think it's, I think it's one forty-five. Is that, that's when it first starts?
So if we want to disassemble just a couple of minutes earlier that, you can go right in for your duration. Again, if you.
Our one thirty?
If you say an hour and a half, remember, it's easier to come back out and go back in. But if you say an hour and a half, you're, you're somewhat committed to an hour and a half, for example. So depending on how they're scheduled, you should stick with that schedule the best you can. Any other questions, comments regarding the special meeting? Do we have three signatures? Good, excellent. So we will, Mayor, you'll call a special meeting for approximately one thirty-five-ish tomorrow? Start?
It says one forty-five, and then we start, so I think that should be with us prior, and then we'll probably start that initial one right at two. So we'll start the meeting at one forty-five.
Okay, one forty-five, for the record. Excellent. Congratulations are in order to, for the city, if we can move on, is it fine? The phase one of Ninety-Eighth Street was let, and the bids were awarded, the bid to McInnany Construction. We anticipated that being three point six million dollars, our share, our share is one million, five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars.
Nice.
So that, now, remember what we were fighting is the inflation. So those things, from what we can understand, the supplies and some of this other stuff that was really impacting some of these construction projects has stabilized. And so now they're getting an easier, better picture of what these costs are going to be. This McInnany, I think, appreciates this being somewhat of a year-long project. Remember, we're going to try to, they're required to, keep access open as much as they can. There'll be short periods of road closures when it's necessary, but they're going to be doing all the, somewhat the communication, the PR work on that sort of stuff. So what this means to us is we're in somewhat of a, of a hurry up, okay? We don't have one point five million dollars. We do what we don't. So in a sense, what we are going to do is temporary notes is our, is the full suggestion, and I agree with that suggestion. And that we have to have all of this in place by November eighth, for a November ninth payment, okay? Now, in a sense, we, we have a schedule that includes October ninth, and then the meeting right after that. We have some things that the governing body must do, and as that part of the process. We want to give us enough time to then, once we issue those temporary notes, that the transcript is delivered to the Attorney General's office for review, so that we can have the money and make the payment on November ninth. And why that's so important is, at this point, there's not much flexibility in when we owe the money. Okay, so we need to secure the funds so we can make that payment, so we don't lose the, the matching funds. So that's a five point six million dollar project that we're going to spend just that one point five million, a little over that. This is a really good deal, and we're just really happy about that. So now we need to talk about, any questions or comments on that? There will be a schedule, we're going to be on this, this will be a priority because of the timeframe to get this money secured, okay? We don't want to capitalize the interest payment, meaning roll it into the note, we won't, don't want to do that. It's a hundred and eighty-seven thousand plus at this point for that payment. We have capacity, it's close, but there's still capacity, we'll have a fund balance in our debt service, it will remain. But in twenty-twenty-five, we've, that, that debt payment falls from over eight hundred thousand to around that six hundred and fifty thousand. So right there, we have some really good capacity, so we'll be able to easily absorb that payment. It's going to be a little closer in this kind of first payment in twenty-twenty-four. The loan would, would be easier made if we're committed to having one payment, principal and interest in twenty-twenty-four. It's, they're just more eager to, to make the loan. We don't want it, we're going to issue temporary notes, unless you tell me something different. Our expectation is temporary notes, we're better off because some of these projects have some flexibility in their kind of this, well, you just seen a change order of, you know, had we paid the full prices, thirty thousand above on an eighty-one thousand dollar project or something, right? So these things do happen, and so we want to have the flexibility of the temporary notes that we, come in a little short or a little long in some way, and that we're able to essentially capitalize on that money and use it best to these projects. So a two-year temporary note or less actually has a higher interest rate, so we're better off at that four-year period, okay? Four years is important because it puts us twenty-seven and out. What that means is phase two of Ninety-Eighth Street and our potential bond. It also means this as well. We've talked about Richland Avenue, and we've talked about Kansas Avenue, okay? Right now, one of them's a little longer, but it's easier to do. One of them has lots more complications, but a little shorter. So in the end, when we look at the high level of the cost of these projects from a really high view, they're about one point eight million a piece. And that's a little heavy on the, heavy, it's not conservative because we just don't know. And in a sense that we should be looking at temporary note for the Ninety-Eighth Street, which we know, we know what the cost that is, we should temporary note for a four-year period-ish for the Kansas Avenue project and the Richland project. Now, what we won't pay in that Richland project, we already have money for the drainage systems. We just mentioned Legacy, for example, you just did one on our second. That would be our next stage for that, we have the money for that particular piece. But really what it comes down to is how do we want to design the road? And we can design it to be a great big looking highway, but we have conferred with our city engineer. CE and I have studied on this, and we appreciate the curb and gutters and all of that, especially on Richland. However, we think we can scale back and do more. Use our money the best and have a twelve to fourteen-year road that you can be proud of as long as you maintain it, right? Now, we fixed the water problem on Richland, I think we're smooth sailing. But what no one has considered is the hill on a hundred and six. See, these are connectors. If you look at Shawnee coming from Edwardsville, a hundred and tenth, comes, come, come back to the east, go down a hundred and sixth. That's a failing road too. So why wouldn't you finish your connector to all the way to Richland Avenue, all the way to Hundred Second, which has already been improved? So that's a whole sector that we can do to be a, a connector road that is, would be well done. We can do it all with this, with this money. Now, could it mean pulverized and placed, full depth replacement, certainly. But remember, I know that the Richland is one of our priorities, and I, I appreciate that because it's a failing road for sure. But part of, we sent a lot of traffic down there, which had never been there before, right? And on a consistent basis, two times. So what we have is a lot of feedback that says this road needs complete attention, is that right? So in a sense that we kind of designed it to be this road that might go through to the west, all the way through the property, there's a pond behind there. But that is something thirty years plus. I say not do it right for right now, but do it for the immediate future, that ten to twelve, fifteen-year road that we bond through temporary notes now and get ready by summer to ensure that we're doing the Ninety-Eighth Street, and we're doing the Richland, and we're looking heavily at the Kansas Avenue. So the construction of the road, I think we have opportunity to scale that back, to do more with other roads, touch as many as we can, and get these connectors all ready to go without having so much of the, kind of, the expense, that's really heavy, by the way, of running the curb and those guttering systems. And the reason why, we're going to improve the drainage, we're going to do that. And so that should help this road hold up. And again, remember, all those people went by there and they said it was a terrible road, but on a daily basis, there's under one hundred cars a day through that. But on a daily basis, there's under 100 cars a day through that road. So, but if we touch more of them with the same money, I think what you'll see is something tangible has happened to the streets. Something that people can see, here's this and here's that, and we still get a quality road, okay? Kansas Avenue has a little bit of challenge to it in the sense that it's misaligned with the right-ofways. That's the best way to say it, in that when they built it, as Mr. Bishop pointed, it's a straight road. However, the property kind of, the road goes over a right-ofway and does some, some, some different things. We have to make some adjustments there right-ofway. We need to figure out where the right-ofway is going to be and the road's going to be, so we know where to put the utilities. So there is some work that we need to do prep just to get there. But that road also is about $1.8 million by the time you put all the investment in it that, that needs to be done. Now, what kind of road do we want to build there? And are there some other things? I know we're, I know there is some concern of Mr. Bishop and his neighbors as well, that it's already heavily trafficked for that kind of road now because we have that, that event center, the Hollis Center down there. So it drives more than the residential traffic, right? And so even, even without a traffic count, it gets more than usual. And therefore, we were going to worry about the speeds and things and how do we want to design that road? And so I think on a, kind of a heavy foot on the, on the budget of that particular road, 1.8 million. And the other, Richland to include the 106th connector altogether, another 108. So what we're anticipating is that we have the capacity to pay for that, about 187,000 as the payment in 2024, maybe more. We got to do the, the final numbers. But I think what we do is we fund all of that through the temporary note. And then we then change that temporary note when Phase Two of 98th Street is let and we turn it into, we sell the bonds. We took, we, we convert temporary into a bond sale. And interest rates are expected to be much better. The, the amount of money helps in what we're doing. And in the sense of how much it's going to cost us to have that note and things like that. So that is pretty high-level view of what kind of we're moving towards. No matter all of that, we have to focus on at least the 1.5 million plus for the KDOT project. That's kind of small potatoes in the bond market. Okay, that's, that's not, it, it sounds like a whole lot of money. It certainly doesn't mean. But in the sense of how we want to finance these projects and the timing, by the time we're ready in four years, if we do these and have this money, and hopefully we come out better ahead when we get the actual cost to Kansas Avenue, 106th all the way down to Richland, that we're in a better position. And there will be money in the sense that maybe we can touch some other roads as well. And we should know that, especially when we get the hard, the, really the hard figures to those projects. Again, these are all dependent on what you decide, the level of road that you want to build. So I think this is the funding mechanism piece that, that staff needs to go forward with. Again, it comes down to, we definitely need to do the DOT project for sure. I, I just think the timing is really good for us. And so I will yield to any discussion, Mayor, and however you direct me.
Well, I did a little bit of research. I've had residents calling me pretty consistently about Kansas Avenue since we decided early in the spring to address that in 2023. And so when I was digging, I found the hot shot where it said for Speaker Road, we've dedicated $130,000 to that. Second Street, $40,000 to that from this year's budget. Richland, we had $225,000 to that. In Kansas, we had $160,000 dedicated to that. So I guess my question would be on, especially the Richland and the Kansas Avenue. Is that money still going to be earmarked in, ready to go toward those projects? Or are we, is there anything we're doing this year to address those with those funds?
Yeah, those are good questions because it's 190,000 for all the pre-construction, the survey, all the engineering. And for both of those, they're so very similar that the engineering is about the same cost as well as the build cost, just at that high-level view, just because again, one's more complex, one's longer, one's shorter, that sort of thing. But in the sense, it, it really depends on what's not clear is where this money is coming from. And I just got to go back and, and some of these are designated in street and drainage, okay? That, that may be a bonded fund that we have, 729, for example, it says street and drainage or something, right? So when you look at that, there's not really a project list that I could find associated. But I'm presuming that there are already funds that are ready to pay for the, the initial, like the pre-construction, the surveying, where we're going to put the road and so, and we've been getting those bills in, I could tell that much. And so I'll, I'll research that a little more. But in the sense, this would be a part of those costs. So right now, from, from what I can tell from these sheets that I was given, there isn't too many, there isn't, this is about clearing and grubbing, storm pipes, all of that other stuff, not the pre-construction stuff. So I'm, I'm, I'm almost presuming that this set aside money is for those things. And this bid of 1.8 or just a high-level overview of a cost of the road is not going to include those things. So this would probably be the build cost and this would be the surveying, engineering cost.
And, and I can also not to you so you can see, like, it has a description in what was included. Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure that since we had money set aside for that, that it didn't just pay into a general fund or something else that we were addressing the streets that we set out to. I also wanted to know, and you probably have looked into this or might intend to, I know everything's been really busy. But there's a lot, billions of federal dollars set aside specifically for infrastructure. And a lot of that might be applicable to stormwater in our city. And so I wonder if there might be any grant funding that we could apply in the state to help with these costs.
Yeah, there are programs, yes. But unfortunately, that doesn't, yeah, in, in time, it certainly, uh, timing really is the key here, unfortunately. And it's, it's on me, just like it's quickly on you. It's like, hey, guys, what do you want to do, you know? So, so this thing is just, they just awarded this bid and now we're talking about how best to finance things. So like the infrastructure and some of this other stuff, maybe, I know it was presented, Mr. Malott suggested that we need to address stormwater in the Old Town and that the sewer. And, you know, ARPA could be related, but that wouldn't even touch that project. It's just so expensive. And thus, this may be some of that, that, that looks to the future. And/or could we combine, because remember, if we fund these construction, road construction projects, we'd then be able to redesignate them to other road construction projects. So if there's, if somehow we look in the next year or so that these particular infrastructure monies are available through granting or whatever, we could still probably use them and they'll have a surplus in these other accounts and then which we can redesignate to say, hey, we're going to repair Second Street or High Street or something else. So that, that, that's always possible. We're just issuing temporary notes that will have this cash in this account and that we're designated to spend it on these road projects. And therefore, like, like we understood in the, the building acquisition, acquisition. We know legally, we just have to redefine these, send the script to the Attorney General, have it approved, and then we can use the money for other purposes. So I think there's our, kind of our saving grace, if you will. Any direction? I know there's, there is a schedule. It's quick. You're going to see a couple of things before you on the 9th. And then again, remind me the 20-something meeting. That calendar's a long way away for 52-year-old eyes, so without their glasses.
23rd is the next.
23rd, okay. So we will have a couple of things there. We have asked KDOT today to extend one more week because that 9th is a very hard timeline. What I'll plan to do is, they haven't responded on the KDOT thing. I'm hoping they will. It's just to give us a little more buffer because the obstacle here to meeting the deadline is really Attorney General's office reviewing the, the easy script and putting their stamp on it. But as government goes, government goes slow. So we don't want to miss any deadlines. And we don't want to give up these STP funds that we were awarded on this project. I mean, the government's paying quite a bit of money for this, this project, so.
How long do we have to decide before the STP? Because it's a, a lot of information tonight.
It is a lot of, that's why I'm briefing you now. And we will start with the schedule. We will get all of the financing package together and then we'll start to really talk about that by the 9th. We'll have some formal discussions. I'll, I'll try not to overly communicate it too much. But as things really evolve, I want you to be abreast of these things because some important decisions have to be made. And it's, by the time you get to the end of October, you really don't have much time to table. And we'd have to have a special meeting between then and the 9th. And we, and these things need to keep rolling because they are on a fast track. So what I'm going to do, unless there's an absolute no, we're going to package these projects up as one piece. And these designations for this amount of money. And then we'll see what that looks like and you'll be able to tell what the payment's going to be and how it impacts our debt services, right? That debt service is the one you have 10.4 mils assigned to, okay? Would that be okay if I proceed that way? And we'll get, we'll get our expertise from Piper Sandler. They're our financial advisors. And we have our bond attorney already engaged, so we think we can hit this timeline.
I think that'd be helpful, so we know the full picture of what their request is.
I will do it. Let's see, is there anything? Let me look at my pack, stack here so I don't forget. Uh, thank you to our great employees who worked on the festival. They got kind of handed off, you know, and between employees going and coming and that sort of thing. But Brenda and Elizabeth did a terrific job with what they were handed and it was a good thing they were apprised of the, of the project early on. We did, we did end up some good sponsorships. It was, it, the whole year has been down somewhat in that area. The volunteerism, we just simply didn't have it, but they really stepped up. As you noticed, we had approved a beer garden for the project, but the Chamber of Commerce was going different directions and it really didn't communicate well, so they didn't have that piece of it. I don't know if we missed it or not. They did pay us a vendor fee as somewhat of a donation and we were able to offset some of the cost. The city contributes about $6,000 to Autumn Fest and they, they, they did well with the money. I, I just really appreciate what they've done. And we gave them a couple of gift cards for all their work and, and they handled it. They just really, we, we're in good hands of next year and the, and the coordination, they're ready to go. They already have it mapped out and everything, so. Good job to them. And Mayor, I think that is it. City Attorney.
No, it's good. I just want to follow up on last meeting. This, this is a separate agenda item for a future meeting next time. I had talked to someone about the public voting decision and Attorney General opinion about the nature of the city council mayor, roles in the budget and other ordinance processes. I didn't know if there was direction from the council of me actually wanting me to reach out or if that was just, I kind of left it as that's an option, but nothing was really decided. So at least wanted to bring that up again and because that would take some time, have to court their interests, so to speak. But since there is a previous Attorney General opinion from the 1980s, that I think if there's a precedent for the Attorney General opining on such things. And so I'm not saying it would take it, but it's something I could do about the little money.
Yes.
Yes.
I've asked for it three or four times.
For me?
To the city. I've requested that. I think it's important that we know that.
No.
What, what, what are the costs going to be incurred with the approximately? What is, is there going to be any outside costs for the city? Your research, your, any, any work added on to you?
I would, I've already done the research that I thought I got to that point.
So it's basically you reach. Basically, you're reaching out to the Attorney General where you said. Could take a while for the response.
And if there's a split in the body, I don't, I don't know.
And I'm confused. So there, the Attorney General's answer is the Bible?
No, it would be persuasive authority. It's not like a, a court decision, but it is a formal role of the Attorney General to provide guidance when requested. It's discretionary when it involves political subunit, subdivisions like counties and cities. It's not discretionary when requested by a, a state official. And so there's no guarantee that they would do so, but like I said, the, that is, that is the role of the Attorney General's office. And the logic division is to resolve cases, not resolve, broad guidance, statewide guidance for issues of law that can be, set a, an interpretation of an area law or point out for the legislature where there's ambiguity in the law, so that if something needs to be resolved by the legislature, it can. And then, that it wouldn't involve more research on my part to do unless you ask me to keep working, which I don't think you've asked me to do to date.
So we don't know what kind of answer, we don't know, not on what we don't know, I guess?
No, and that's, I mean, that was the point of where I just showed you kind of my thinking.
Right.
Showed my math, so to speak. But following up on that, reaching out to the Attorney General.
If I could add to the conversation, it's really a question because I know Mr. Scott reached out, I believe an email to the Attorney General's office and he did receive some sort of feedback. And so what is the, forgive me, is the influence of maybe your position with that maybe solicit a different, maybe, you know, weight in some way?
Maybe, maybe not. I would just say that generally, the opinions, and I think even probably the city attorney opinion or the opinion from the 1980s that I referred to, generally, it's the city attorney reaching out to the AG or the county counselor reaching out to the AG on behalf of the body to say, you know, this is a legal question I've looked into. This is where I've got to it thus far with the, I think it's a matter, and articulating, I think it's a matter of statewide public policy that would help guide municipal law. And to be able to say, we formally request that you exercise your discretionary role to provide some guidance on it. So I'm not saying that I would have any more influence than Councilman Scott, I'm just saying that's the normal process.
So I, I reached out to Attorney General because there's just so much undecidedness of whether the mayor could veto on that particular vote or not. So their response was, we hope you'll understand, as the chief legal officer for the state of Kansas, the Attorney General's Office defends a state and its employees acting in their official capacity against lawsuits. The Attorney General's Office cannot provide legal research, interpretation, or advice regarding legal matters or disputes with other individuals, businesses, or government agencies. While this office is prohibited from researching specific statutes and providing legal advice to private individuals, we do not want to provide some resource for you to use. The Kansas statutes are online and available to search and it gives a, a link here. And it says, also, you may consider consulting with a private attorney, you, city attorney, for legal assistance. If you not already have a private attorney, and they're giving you, give me a list here.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that sounds kind of boilerplate from them to beg off in the, in the instance that it may, may be interpreted as, does the body want this or does, does one, one council elected official want this and doesn't represent the will of the body?
Right.
And that's why I think what they just said may be true for isolated members of a body. But it would carry more weight if the, if the council itself was asking it through the city attorney or the city manager.
Right.
And to resolve a question because it is the role of the Attorney General to provide guidance. They've done it in the past. They do routinely on municipal law. The question is, every Attorney General's administration probably has a different view of its own resources. And so Attorney General Schmidt might have taken certain matters up, whereas Attorney General Koba wouldn't. As far as their logic division, the resources available. So I'm not guaranteeing that we would even be able to court interest, but it's.
Yeah, I think, I think for, for me, you know, I think.
Yeah, I think, I think for, for me, you know, I think we asked that question, you know, the first time when the veto came out, and then there's, then you were, you know, you did the research, and then the second time, the two weeks after veto came back out, and then at that point, you said, you're, you're just undecided on what the law says. And so I thought at that point that, because you said that that's an option versus, you know, going to a district court or whatever, or go to the attorney, attorney general beat, you know, no expense. And I thought that's when you would, you know, you would do that automatically. But I emailed them, and then 24 hours, I had that response back. I was pretty impressed with their response back, but I, I think for me, I just, I know the mayor, mayor has that power, but I just, you know, I've been told by several different legal, you know, counselors, if you will, that not in this case, not on the budgetary, you know, type of, you know, vote that we did. I think the mayor has the power of veto on ordinances, but not necessarily on the budget, because it's not an ordinance, if I understood that correctly. So I think it's just more clarity for us, or for me in the future, you know, what, you know, what, you know, what can we expect or not, but
Yeah, and I mean, that's
I mean, that's just me.
That was the point of me providing what I consider to be a little bit more of extensive, here, here are the arguments on both ways. And I, if there are other second opinions, third opinions, that would provide that, that type of analysis to say, we know that you're a city, a council city for purposes of 12-3003, and this is why, that would help the, the process. But it, it seems like, at least in my, my experience, as far as resolving these complicated matters, where you seem to have two, three, four, or five conflicting statutes, not, not to even mention the fact that the ordinance contemplates a veto power that doesn't mention appropriation like 12-3003, that you actually have to do the work, and the ju, any judge looking at it would have to do the mental work to get through the analysis to say, and this is why. And so that's, that's what I think the attorney general's office would, would provide versus just kind of knee jerk, well, of course, this statute provides, or, or that statute provides, because I will grant, the statutes seem to provide a lot of different conflicting things, and that's, that's where we found ourselves. And I, I do not, as city attorney, want to find ourselves in that situation again, especially under a time crunch, where we have to get something passed. I want to be able to make sure I provide as much value to you well in advance, so that each one of you can make decisions based on your own elected mandate, as far as I'm concerned. So with that, I don't, I don't feel like I have guidance. Maybe it's a discussion for another day of, of the body, and, and it, me reaching out, I, and I'm not saying I, or anyone else would get a different answer. It may just be
Well, it'd be interesting to know if you, if you reach South Town, and, and just see if you got a different answer, or a complete answer, or whatever. I think it would help, it would help me, for sure, because I mean, that, I would, if I was mayor and I used the veto, I'd want to know if I could legally use it or not. You know what I mean? I wouldn't want to enter gray area. I wouldn't want to overuse my power, if you will, or that veto. I know it's there for certain things, but again, what I've been told and advised, not necessarily on a budget, when you're, when you're doing the budget, but only on ordinance and charter ordinance.
And there's an argument, there is an argument, I think I put this in the, in the email, that, that despite what the ordinance says, because it says pursuant to state statute, there are statutes that you could conclude that there's no veto power whatsoever. And so this isn't necessarily limited to budget questions in the future. Now, I, I would say that that's an, that, that is likely not the ultimate case, that it seems like there's a clear veto power, but the, the state legislature has not done you any favors in how they've structured chapter 12, 13, and 14, or chapter 12 and 14.
I think we need clarity as a council. Because you look at other, other city councils, and I don't, I look back, and, I mean, I've had a hard time finding anybody that vetoed anything. So I think, I think it'd be, I think we need clarity.
Agreed.
Agreed, or we'll be in this mess again next year.
This'll happen again. We need a clear, some kind of a clear answer for this.
I disagree.
What do you think?
We got one!
Is that a yes?
What the hell that was?
So it, I'm, I'm having a whole lot of trouble understanding, so we've got all these statutes out there that kind of talk different, one says this, one says that, but you're going to ask the attorney general, and that answer is going to be, just totally get rid of all the other statutes? Is that, I, I mean, I, I don't even know how I'm asking that, because I just don't understand.
Yeah, no, it's a, I mean
Regardless of all these statutes, when that attorney general sends you a name, that's going to be the answer.
Well
That's, that's what confuses me.
Yeah, they are not an arbitrator.
Right.
We're not, you're not agreeing to cede your, it's not, you can't even cede your legal question to an agreement among yourselves, I guess, through charter potentially. But I, I think it would be, if it's going to be issued, and say, they were to take it up, and they were to issue something in three months, or four months, or whatever, to update or clarify the 1980s, 82, 84, opinion, that would not only provide guidance for us, but it would provide guidance for, for the entire state regarding cities of the second class, and a city, or a mayor, council mayor, manager of a government. And it would also provide clarity with respect to how 12-3003, whether it's universal and applicability, or, or, or it's not, given the, that phrase in there, that, of course, council cities. And so could a council choose to disregard an attorney general opinion? Yes. It is not binding authority, it's persuasive authority. But it would at least provide a little bit of arm's length, which I try, I'm trying to provide.
Right.
And it's difficult sometimes to
You brought us two or three different answers.
Because you guys disagree with one another, and I'm not the, I'm not the attorney for any one of you, I'm the attorney for the body, the governing body.
Right.
And, and so to provide my best read on it, it would at least provide a level up opinion. But you could, you can choose to disregard my opinion. I mean, if I were to come out on one side or the other, versus the, I don't know, which I hate that that's where I ended up, that's where I ended up, because it's, it's not clear, and there is no case law on it, there's no attorney general opinion on it. You could, you could have chose to disregard and say, well, we got, we got the votes, let's go forward. But I think there's value, to answer your question, Councilman Trevor, that I think there's value in the potential for a more statewide resolution of these issues, because at the very least, the interpretation of KSA 12-3003, and how far it goes in terms of limiting what types of mayor's authorities, is an open question.
What does our, do we have a city ordinance explaining this right now?
Yes, it's a charter ordinance. Yes, and I think you alluded to it, is that, it says, it's 1.03.005 Aces Number Six, in some sections that says. So it says, the mayor shall have the power to approve or to veto any ordinance as the law of the state shall prescribe. And what our council is telling us is that that's where the ambiguity sets in, because what state law? Which one? Or the absence of one, right? In the sense, is there prohibition? Is there approval? You know, you, right? What, what is? So that's where the charter ordinance leaves some ambiguity, because when you refer back to the state law, forgive me about overstepping here, common layperson description here is that there's not one specific one that absolutely says for absolutely certain that this is yes or no. Can you do it? Yes. Can you do it? No. That's where the ambiguity comes in, therefore, he's written this in his statement, he's, his best guidance to you is legal avenues, the attorney general, persuasive but not binding. That, those were your options, and they still remain that today. And we do have at least one piece of feedback that says the attorney general doesn't do this kind of work, but you've heard, contrary to that, there may be some weight given, because it does come from a city attorney, but we, the risk is, we get the same answer, or we get an answer that we don't like, right? Or we get the answer that we do like. So there's, there's these kind of things, you know?
I think at this point, I don't know if it's a, I don't think it's a like or dislike, I think it's just more clarity. I mean, the, the vote's there, you know, that we agreed on, what we agreed on. I think it's more for the future, and I think, again, for me, and if I was mayor, I would want to know, if I'm using a, a tool that was, that I thought was on my resource, can I use it, or should I not use it? And if there's, I think for me, if I was, if I didn't know yes or no, I would probably lean about not using it, because I wasn't sure if I could use it or not legally. So I think it's just, as I said, it's not necessary for a yes or no, just, just so we know in the future.
Well, it's not on fire tonight.
Yeah.
In two weeks, if there is a desire to at least task me with that, I, I don't know how that would necessarily work, if it needs to be a formal motion, if it's not a consensus, then, you know, we can take it as it comes, but I, that, I wanted to follow up on that since I suggested that, but obviously, we were very tired at the end of last meeting, it was very late, and so that was probably not on everyone's top.
I'd like to ask the mayor, I mean, I think it's up to her, I mean, would you like to know yes or no, if you could use that or not?
Um
Or was you advised that you could use it when you did it?
I wasn't advised from anyone, except for my own research, and looking at our ordinances, and it said as the state should prescribe, and the state didn't say I couldn't. I'll tell you the feedback that I got from the residents, and they were very thankful that someone was looking out for them and speaking up for them. And so little past precedent is, every year before this, at least 10 years back in the minutes, the mayor actually had a vote on the budget. And, and what we're talking about now says the person, the highest elected official in the city would have zero say in the budget, which is one of the most important things that we vote on as a governing body. And I don't think that's appropriate, to say the highest elected official in the city has zero say on the budget. So I can tell you where I stand on it, I think that it's appropriate for the mayor to have some sort of say in this, whether to veto or vote. I can tell you where the residents stand on it, and residents feel free, feel free to tell me if there's another opinion, but every single resident that I spoke to after that was very thankful for, for the veto at that particular vote, just to have us reconsider and try to work together a little bit further as a, as a group, and, and find some consensus on that. I think that you've got something to think about, maybe we'll, we'll discuss then, and come back to you, if, if it's not urgent to decide today, and then if we want to move forward any particular direction, we can discuss that.
I disagree. I think we should ask for an attorney general's opinion on it, the sooner the better. I think the mayor overstepped her authority. I don't remember the mayor's voting for the budgets. I remember the mayor's recommending budgets. I think that, that there was so much discussion on the budget, I think three people finally relented somewhat. I know two people barely relented on the budget. I think it's more important issue than that. I think we need an opinion. We're talking about money, money, money on streets and projects, and how are we going to finance them? We're trying to build city facilities. If you build streets and you don't have curbs and gutters, you're going to have to have employees to clean the ditches out and keep the streets up. I don't think that, I think that this needs to be solved as soon as possible. I think we need to, I'd like to make a motion to request the attorney, to request the attorney general, an opinion on this subject.
Would that technically be amending the agenda?
I don't care what you got to do, I just think we need to do it. However you need to amend the agenda, or whatever.
That's Mayor, she has a question.
Sorry, is that true, that the mayor was able to vote for the last 10 years on the budget?
Well, I don't recall, the mayor was called on, especially planning and zoning, if I recall, right? We'd have to do, I, I would trust that she's done her, Mayor, that you've done your research, and that there was, that there was some vote. I know during transition, and Mayor, you can confirm this or not, that there was some discussion, we wanted a legal opinion as to the, I, I guess, not the veto, but the vote or the authority of the mayor, and that there was, that we could look back to precedence, something we were all doing in practice, if we had in our ordinance, if I recall, right? And I think that this is some research you did. In the, or that some of these were defined maybe by statute and the ordinance, we figured out that, hey, some of this we were doing wrong. As simple as I could put it. I haven't, I haven't found that particular document to say, these were absolute. I know there were some email exchanges from the previous administration to say, we're, we're defining this, but there was a past practice that involved the mayor voting. I just can't say what specific category it is.
I would be interested to know that, because then I would want to know why, you know, that it
Well, it's, planning zoning is a different function of board. It's a, it's a quasi judicial function, in which you're, you have a law already set, your planning code, and then you have an application, and so you're sitting as an adjudicator. You're, you are determining whether the application for use of the land, or a variance in that use in the land, is, meets with the code, and you can, and so if you were to be sued on that, it would be because, it would be within you acting as a quasi judicial body, and there's very limited basis for challenging that. The legislative function of passing a budget is, is different, and that's why we found ourselves back into, well, what's, who votes on it? A. And B, does the mayor have the ability to, to veto it? So I didn't mean to open up old booms, so to speak, but at the same time, I, I at least wanted to be able to articulate that, to me, the, the rule of law, even in Edwardsville, Kansas, is ultimately what is going to provide not only you, but the, the citizens with the most certainty in the future, and it's my job to safeguard that law. And I think that it, it would be something of a constitutional crisis if the council believed it had passed one ordinance, and the, the mayor believed she vetoed that same ordinance without a, a veto proof majority of the council. That was the constitutional crisis that I was trying to, or in this case, ordinance crisis, where I was trying to articulate last time, which you were able to avert, because there was consensus on a, a budget. And so I mentioned it solely to say that I, I want you to continue to view me as a resource for the entire body, and sometimes that can mean drafting competing proposals of the same policy, meaning as a resource for you all to be able to debate and deliberate each, each meeting, and to give you the options when there is a severe disagreement. And one of the options I at least found this time is that I do think it's a significant amount, enough, public importance of statewide concern, that if the attorney general, or someone in the attorney general's office is trying to beg off, that they should have the best case made for, for taking the case, so to speak.
Well, I just believe, excuse me, if I would just believe, though, if we should have clarity in this matter, because I don't ever remember tiny voting on any budgets when, you know, when I was around before, or watching them. But I think if clarity will be, give us transparency, and that's, that's very rare in government.
Mayor, a couple of things, if I recall, we'll do the research for sure. I think there was an interpretation of what the governing body vote was, so it's a vote of the governing body. So for example, planning zoning, charter ordinances are a specific example, where the entire body has a vote. The mayor cannot veto, in which they would have to vote, right? So that, that's one piece of it. The, so we'll have to research, I think we just have to go back, and I know we have some, some legal documentation on, to answer the questions, why. The next piece is governance, and the question that you posed is whether or not a motion was made, and that would change the agenda in some way. was made, and that would change the agenda in some way. The resolution that we passed, I think, had intent to address these things, because they're a matter of public concern, and they're not on the published agenda. And there was a motion made as to direct the city attorney to then go and contact the Attorney General, to solicit the option of an opinion from them about this particular matter. So there is a motion, there's not been a second, and it would take four or five votes to put this on the agenda and/or move it to a different agenda, like the next year. So far as, as far as the resolution that we passed this particular year, it takes four or five, add something to the agenda. Because of that, public, matter of public concern, it wasn't published, the public didn't get to see or hear the material, unless they're watching now, but maybe if it had been published, that's the intent, if it had been published, they could then come and hear personally the matter of concern.
I will rescind the motion, and ask the mayor to put that on the next agenda.
Does it have to be on the agenda to just ask the attorney to get it looked at, or-
I guess, we haven't got much power up here.
I mean, it's totally up to you, I actually stand on the question that was posed.
Oh, we do-
I think the question that I have is, that, I believe, and I don't want to misinterpret, that the concern is regarding a veto on a budget. When is the next time we're voting on a budget?
Well, it could be the next ordinance that comes up-
Well, that's not-
That we could be stalemated on. I mean, you know, this is something that's gonna accelerate, I can guarantee you, this is gonna accelerate.
So this-
I would request that this item be put on the agenda for the next meeting.
But the question wasn't about the veto regarding ordinance, it's a veto regarding the budget. And so what I'm, what I'm saying is, it might be all right to sit and consider, I don't set the agenda at this meeting or the next one, that's something I can take under consideration in moving forward, in, in considering for the next meeting.
No, I, that, in the legal profession, we call that inviting error.
Yes.
Where, in my city attorney comments, I addressed something that I think that is, is a follow-up and open question, I was not trying to force yet another disagreement on what the legal, whether you can do it tonight, whether you can do it next time, all that. I, I do think that it's in the city's best interest to resolve it before it becomes an issue again, and-
So do you feel like we need a vote, or do you feel like you can just move forward?
No, I-
With it, I mean, is that what you're, if you feel like the city needs to do it?
Without a consensus, at least one council member saying, no, it's not a consensus, you can direct me by consensus to do that, I would probably say at some point you would need to direct me to do it, otherwise, I'm not speaking on behalf of the body if I were to reach out, so-
I see.
Maybe just-
Let's let it sit, so we can, I think we just weren't quite prepared for it, and so, maybe coming back, we could have more of an agreement into which way to best move forward.
And the other option is, at some point, I can actually, if you wanted me to write out the exact request, that will be provided to the Attorney General's office in letter form, for you to consider that question, so it's a more formal deliberation on whether that's of value. But I also don't want to go down rabbit holes that you guys don't want me to go down.
So I think, I think that I, there's three of us, Mark, I don't want to pick for you, but I think Mark, Garrett, myself, we just like clarity on it, and I think, yeah, we are talking about, you know, what happened on the budget, but I think, I think for me though, I'd like clarity, you know, if there is another veto in the near future, it'd be nice if we had this cleared up, and then clarity on whether you could or couldn't veto, you know, a three, five vote in the future, because, I mean, for me, I, you know, I've, I've, I've heard of the veto, I, you know, I don't know the law on it before this happened, so I tried to educate myself as much as I could, but I think for me, having a council, you know, we're all different in our backgrounds and our expertise, you know, and different things, and having the opinion of five different people, and then we had a majority vote of three, five, and then the veto came, you know, it's only, it's basically took away our opinions, and so why do we have a council if we can't speak our mind or give our, our best opinions for the, you know, the direction of our city or future? And I know that, you know, that's the mayor's job, is, you know, the number one with the city manager, but, you know, just, that the veto was, you know, it just didn't feel good for me personally, you know, and it, it just, and I tried not to take it personal, but it was, it was difficult for me too, just because I know we have a voice, we all have an opinion, so I think it just, it would help me get past all that, you know, feelings, if you will, if we could have clarity for the future, because I'm, there's, you know, I talked to several people that I really respect, that are way smarter than me, and said that, you know, that, that veto shouldn't have been allowed for that, that particular case. So I, you know, if the veto's allowed, in other cases, I'd like to know that too, that way, I don't have to worry about it, right? If it's veto happened, it happens, but I think it just, clarity would help, you know, because I don't want any animosity, you know, especially up here. You know, again, I, I respect everybody up here and their opinions, I respect what the mayor's trying to do, but I, I think just for me, it'd be better, it'd be, it'd be good to know what that, what that law is.
And I think my question would be, just, and respectfully, like, I'm not trying to be contentious or anything along those lines, but just to explain a little bit of this seat, is, is you want everyone to have a voice up here, but I would ask, where is mine? Where would my voice be?
Well, I think your, your voice is entrusting that we all have the right information and make the best, best decision for our city.
So I would have zero vote? Yeah, like, I'm, I'm asking, because you're saying you want everyone-
Well, I think that's the way to say that, right?
To have a voice up here, that's why the mayor has the veto, though, is because I don't have a vote. There's, there's a few things that the mayor has, and if, I would ask, why in the world would anyone want to be the mayor? Like, why wouldn't I just run for council? You know, if, if I have zero vote as the mayor, I have zero voice in, in the budget beforehand, and so, as the highest elected official, if I have zero vote and no veto, if you want everyone to have a voice up here, that would mean everyone but me would have a voice up here.
Yeah, that's a bit strong with me, I think that's with the law, I mean, with the, the state, the state statute.
Yeah, and, and the state statutes have reached more absurd results than that in the past, in terms of what it feels like should be the case. Municipal law in Kansas, especially since the 70s with home rule, has, it's, it's the Wild West sometimes, unfortunately, and what feels like should be the case, because we're used to news about the federal model of the, of the Vice President serving as the tie-breaking vote in a divided Senate, or the President having the ability to veto bills, all of those things aren't necessarily the same across the board, and I would say that rules and, and procedure exist to allow for deliberation, and whose voice gets counted in at what processes, and at what points of procedure, is always potentially an open question because of the amount of flexibility that Kansas law allows for cities of the second class, first class, et cetera, constitutionally and statutorily. So, they can lead to results or open questions that feel absurd, whether from the perspective of a council person, or the perspective from a mayor. And so, if there is a way to, a way forward to, to exercise home governance like you did last time, which is, we don't know, and we don't want to be put in this position, we will actually want to deliberate over the policy versus bone-on-bone proceduralism, but that was kind of where I ended up with that, because a knee-jerk, well, yeah, mayor has voted, veto power, or no, the mayor doesn't have veto power, without showing the math, doesn't help with the public trust either, and for the people that have provided you with those answers, I welcome, welcome. Show me, I'd love to see their math.
Yeah.
Because my opinion could change, based on, well, here's the clear-